Okay, at seven o'clock, I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just make a note that Councilman Trinkle is absent. And we'll go to old business, approval of minutes. The regular meeting minutes of May 5th, 2022 are attached. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 5th, 2022 as presented.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Sting.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Epstein.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Okay, well, there's only one. Connie, you know, no. And there is not. Go on to new business. Item number two is approval of the audit ending December 31st, 2021. Staff from the firm Adams Brown LLC performed an audit of the financial statements for the City of Lansing for the year ending December 31st, 2021. Ms. Jamie Bennechek, I hope, a senior audit manager for the firm, will present a brief overview of the audit and answer any questions you have. Do we want to do the presentation and then do a motion, or how do we want to do this, Beth?
Do the presentation.
Okay. Jamie, over to you.
All right, well, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Good. Bennechek is the proper pronunciation, so I think you did pretty good. I'm here to present the audit report. As you said, I'm a senior audit manager with Adams Brown. I'm located in Hayes, and so I really appreciate you allowing me to deliver your audit report via Zoom today. And so we'll jump right in. I have the audit report up on the screen. Is everyone able to see it?
Yes, we can see it.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so the independent auditor's report starts on page one of the file. I think you all got a, an electronic copy. And this front page here I have highlighted in yellow, these are our opinions. We actually issue four different types of opinions on your audit report. Governmental activities, your business type activities, each major fund, and then the rest of it. Each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information is an unmodified opinion. That means it's the cleanest opinion we can issue. The other two are qualified, and the only reason that they are qualified is detailed on page two. And that's because GASB statement number 75 requires you to include post-employment benefits in the financial statement, and those valuations are pretty costly. And so you all elect not to do that and not to spend that money getting those valuations. And so we just noted here that, except for this one item, your audit report was clean. So moving on to page four is management's discussion and analysis. And this is a overview of the year and what happened. And so it is just four or five pages long. And so if you just want an overview of the audit, this is a good section to read. On page 10 starts the actual financial statements. So the statement of net position shows your assets, deferred outflows, liabilities, deferred inflows, and the net position of the city as of the end of 2021. The ending assets were about 54.4 million. Your liabilities were 34 million, and so your net position was 20 million. Going on to page 11, this is your statement of activities or income and loss for the income and expenses for the year. And so your total governmental activities, you had about nine million of expenditures. You have some charges for services, operating grants, and then eight million is what you needed to fund with general revenues such as property taxes, sales tax, et cetera. Your business type activities ended the year on a positive at 928,000. And so then your total general revenues of nine million made up for that, the deficit in your governmental activities. So overall, the year ended at about 1.9 million, which is very similar to how 2020 ended. On page 12, this is the governmental funds. So these are the major governmental funds. So your general fund, your bond and interest, capital improvement, ARPA, those are all of your major funds. And that is determined on a calculation that, that we do based on the assets and expenditures in each one of those funds. And then everything else is lumped under the other governmental funds. So your general fund ended the year with fund balance of 3.4 million. And then on page 20 starts the notes to the financial statements. These are a little lengthy, so I'm not going to read through all of them. But I did want to turn your attention to page 29. This is note two. Stewardship, compliance, and accountability. City of Lansing did not remit or provide a certificate to the state treasurer for the bond payment at least 20 days before the maturity of the bonds. Those, the state treasurer is very picky about that. Even if you're one day late, they will, they tell us whether you're in violation of the statute or not. And so I have a lot of clients this year that are struggling with this because the state changed how they're accepting payments in the last year. And some of it's not necessarily the city or the county's fault, but we still have to note it there. So that was the, the gist of the audit report. Were there any questions on the audit report before I head to the governance letter?
No.
No? Okay. The last item is the governance letter. This details any communication that we had with your management team while we were there auditing or via email afterwards. And on page three, we have an audit recommendation just to make sure that all capital assets are identified and capitalized during the year. And Beth already has a procedure implemented to make sure that that review is happening for 2022. And then down below, there is one material weakness noted this year, and that is encumbrances, which are required to be tracked and booked for any budgeted fund. And so again, there's already a procedure in place to track that for 2022. So I don't anticipate seeing these two notes again next year. Other than that, I would like to thank Beth and Georgia and all of the staff that help us when we're there. They answer all of our questions as soon as we ask them, and they make our job easy. So we appreciate all their hard work. Are there any questions?
Any, from anybody? Nope. No, well, thank you very much, Jamie, for the briefing.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
There is, Beth should have a management representation letter. So as soon as the audit is approved, usually the mayor and Beth would sign that letter and send it back to me.
We will do so. Beth's saying she has it right here. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. There's no questions. I need a motion to approve the final audit for the City of Lansing for the year ended December 31st, 2021.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number three is resolution number B42022, a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds of the City of Lansing, Kansas. Bond counsel Gilmore and Bell has prepared resolution B42022 authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds of the City of Lansing, Kansas. The Geo Bonds Series 2022A are issued to pay the cost of the improvements to Kenneth Bernard Park and the Parks and Recreation Project. I need a motion to adopt resolution number B42022.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? No? Call roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is citywide compensation and benefit study. The staff presented information at the January work session regarding the compensation and benefit study for all job positions not included in the 2021 police pay study. The study would include a review of benefits. The company that performed the police pay study, McGrath Human Resources Group, would conduct this study. Included in the packet is the proposal from McGrath Human Resources Group for the citywide compensation and benefit study in the amount of $19,575. Need a motion to authorize a city administrator to enter into a contract with McGrath Human Resources Group for the citywide compensation and benefit study in the amount of $19,575.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
We have one quick question.
Yeah.
How long does the study, I don't know how long the police took? Are we expecting about the same length on the, everyone else?
Yeah, Beth, did they give us a timeframe?
Yeah, it's in the proposal.
Okay.
It's roughly four months.
Four months.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call a roll on this one.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number five is the purchase of radar detection equipment for K-7 Main Street and Mary traffic signal. Section 410 sole source purchasing in the Lansing purchasing manual allows for the purchasing of specific equipment for various technical requirements. The WaveTronic radar detectors are the systems that are installed at the 147th and Ridge, as well as the Ida Street Signal in 2020. The purchasing of this specific system will keep the radar detectors consistent in terms of compatibility, operation, and maintenance. Staff is available for explanation. I need a motion to authorize the Public Works Department to purchase the radar detection equipment for Mary and Main Street traffic signal from Mid-America Signal in the amount of $24,658.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Couple of questions. You say compatible with what we already have at other locations. What, is that other equipment obsolete, not working?
No, the compatibility of the radar detection is with the ones that were upgraded. We put in Ridge, was our most recent, and then the one we put in in Ida is also the WaveTronics. And the WaveTronics is what's getting installed also at Eisenhower. The existing camera equipment is obsolete. Camera detection is not an obsolete technology, but the equipment that we have in our box itself is no longer supported. However, we've been taking the equipment from Ida, and we would take the equipment from Mary and put it into our reserves. So if we were to lose a card or a camera or something, we could make the installation, and it would just be a simple service call to our on-call installations contractor.
Is it going to work better than the one in Ida? Because that one in Ida still doesn't work right.
Well, I did check the functionality. Unfortunately, I think what we're experiencing is the, it's detecting, but the Operation Greenlight does have operational control of those signals during certain times. And it is keeping the green north-south longer than, and that's-
A long time.
Yeah, that's, that's more OGL. The detector is functioning, and we actually double-checked it when we were out there. We've actually had two service calls on Ida, and we were just trying to make sure. And it's, it is functioning, it's just, I think that, I think what you're experiencing, Councilman, is the, is the, the peak times at OGL is modifying our signal.
You sitting there for a while?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you'll sit there, and you'll look up at the top of the hill, like toward the prison.
Well, everybody's phones are off.
Amber alert.
Amber alert. And you, you won't see any cars like up at the hill by the prison or any cars clear back by Freddy's? And you're like, why is the light changing?
Some of that is because they are phasing it with the Fairlane and the Mary signal at that time.
Right, that makes sense, but.
Hey, follow-on question. Since it's on a state highway, we've been unable to regulate Main Street with speed limits or whatever. Why are we paying for this equipment? Shouldn't the state help us with this?
I would need to go back and read the agreement when the, the equipment was put in to Lansing. That might have been part of the Main Street project in 2006, or it may be a function of our agreement with Operation Greenlight. I don't have a very good answer for you, sorry.
Okay.
Can you just explain, I mean, anybody who's watching or reading this, and they're going to see the word radar, and they're going to go, ah, there are speed traps in Lansing. Right?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I do like the lights being longer going north and south.
But it does benefit me.
If you could explain what the purpose is, which is not to run radar.
Right, right now, we use camera detection. And I think I want for the record, those cameras do not record. They don't record anything. Matter of fact, I've got a black and white CRT in my room, in my office from the old one. They simply recognize a shape and then trigger a detection. It used to be induction loop detectors in the ground, you know, those circles that you see. And now we just, that technology's been replaced with radar. And the radar just simply reads that there's a vehicle there. Now, again, it has to read that there's a vehicle there. Bicycles are to be read by the standards. Those do require some tweaking of the sensitivity. Cars are, of course, easier to detect, but you're right. No, that radar, it doesn't, it doesn't transmit that information anywhere. It doesn't measure anything other than there is a vehicle at this detector. But the best thing about the radar is, unlike the camera, is when it's foggy or when it's snowing, the radar doesn't know that it's foggy or snowing, but the cameras have failed us before in inclement weather.
But this is the control lights.
Yes. Only to, it only says a car is there, and it's told the box, a car is there, and then it, you know, it then controls the light, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I, one more.
Yeah.
Is this going to be, any of this on, when we do the new K-7 work? Is that going to be part of this?
This purchase is not part of that, but the new K-7 light is a WaveTronic radar detector system at K-7. Now, City of Leavenworth operates the K-7 and Eisenhower intersection, but it is also part of Operation Greenlight, so it is phased with our four signals at Fairlane, Ida, Mary, and 4H.
But that equipment is budgeted in the cost of that upgrade, right?
Yeah, the, the equipment on K-7 is a different fund from this. This was a operation fund that we budgeted in, may have put even the, but, but yes, yes, it is, so.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Now, we got a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number six is resolution B52022, condemnation resolution for the city project 2021-03 Town Center Sewer Extension. The resolution is the first enabling steps to pursue condemnation, if necessary, of interest in property permanent and temporary easements necessary for the construction of the above referenced project. Enactment of the resolution clears the way to later enact a condemnation ordinance listing any specific easements that cannot reasonably be obtained through negotiation if needed. It's prudent to enact an enabling resolution at this time so that the governing body does not have to wait an extra meeting cycle to pass a condemnation ordinance if needed. Delays due to the length and time required for condemnation have the potential to delay the completion of the project. Every reasonable effort will be made to obtain all easements through negotiation with the city staff, regardless of whether the resolution is enacted. I need a motion to enact resolution B52022, a resolution of condemnation for permanent and temporary construction easements for city project 2021-03 Town Center Sewer Extension.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven is easement acquisition request, city project 2021-03. The next step in the Town Center Sewer Extension project is to acquire the necessary temporary and permanent sanitary sewer easements for the construction of the improvements. While some of these improvements occur in existing easements, the new easements necessitate the removal of trees, driveways, and ornamental landscaping. An enabling resolution for condemnation has just been approved by the council at this meeting. Staff will perform easement acquisition of the four parcels needed for this project. Offer letters will be mailed the week of May 16th. The opinion of just compensation for the temporary easements, permanent easements, and cost to cure items as determined by Valbridge Property Advisors is $7,860. So I need a motion to authorize staff to complete the easement acquisition activities for the Town Center Sewer Extension project.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number eight is supplemental, supplemental agreement, Town Center Sewer Extension, city project 2021-03, 030, I'm sorry. During design of the Town Center Sewer Extension project, additional work was completed by George Butler Associates that was not anticipated in the original design, scope, or fee. Staff also directed GBA to perform additional work to provide an accurate plan for set, plan set for bidders. Additional work resulted in a fee increase of $17,223. Need a motion to authorize the supplemental agreement number one with George Butler Associates in the amount of $17,233 and authorize the necessary signatures.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
What was not anticipated, Tony?
Per those bolded items that were listed in the gen item, some of the work I, I had requested to try and quantify how much rock was out there because of the original rock cores that we got. We're only at every man location, and we found rock at very shallow depths. So we wanted to try and hone in on where exactly that rock was and what deep, how deep it was so that we can put an accurate plan set together.
Finding rock in this town is not hard.
It is not, but when you find rock at three feet and you have to go to 33 feet.
Yep. That's a big deal then.
It's a big deal. So, and some of the other work had to do with right-of-way acquisition and just trying to get some documents from KDA as well as some unanticipated fees with locating sewer laterals for some of the properties that we didn't have accurate data for.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tony?
Thanks, Tony.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey? Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number nine is executive session for land acquisition. I need a motion to enter executive session. The preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA 75 4319, B6, for a period of 10 minutes, to return to open meeting at 7:33.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Take a motion, open session, second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to return to open session. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Reports, anything from the department heads?
Yeah, Tony Zell had something.
Okay.
I was going to let you know, we did that wire replacement project at the treatment plant a couple of weeks ago. And the contractor left all the wire that we pulled out of the ground. It's almost 1,300 feet of copper. So we spent a little bit of money and bought a tool to strip all the wire, you know, the sheathing off. And we cleaned the plant up and made a couple trips to the scrapyard, and we netted $8,200. Nice. So we had about 1,500 bucks in it, but.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
That's good.
Normally, I couldn't ask for mine, now, so I'm giving a little bit back.
Yeah, we'll just take that off, that 17K we just paid for.
There you go. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Any other department heads? Nope. City attorney?
Mayor, I did make some inquiries about the case that's before the spring court. We still have nothing.
Okay.
I checked every Friday, because they publish every Friday their decisions. Still have received one, checking with Mr. Hall. There have been other cases argued after ours that have been decided. So there must be some discussion going on about particular issues, and that's why it might be taking so long.
Okay.
There's no timeline, though? I mean, they can take as long as they want?
Yeah, I mean, I think they originally mentioned, you know, April, May timeframe. And so now it's looking like it's not.
There may be restless on some issues. I mean, obviously, you all know what issues are, but there could be restless on some issues depending on which way they go.
Yeah.
They have a lifetime job they don't have to worry about.
Hey, Tim, what do you got?
You guys might have seen the VFW is holding that ceremony on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial at Bernard Park. So if you guys are able, please go out there Saturday.
Rain or shine?
What's that?
The rain or shine?
I believe so. Yeah, I believe it is, yep.
They got an incredible speaker for that.
Yes, Marcus Major.
It's me, yeah.
I'm not going.
I'm not going.
Because Tony's got to go to Vegas.
Hey, some people have.
So, you know, we, we had two really fantastic events the last couple of weeks. Just so really impressed with Jason and his staff on the fishing derby. Matt and our new event coordinator Denise did a fantastic job with the barbecue contest. So just two really fantastic events that I wanted to give a shout out to. Another bit of really positive news that I was excited about. You guys might be aware, the Royals have this charitable foundation. We applied for a grant to help offset some of our costs for our ballpark. So the Royals, Kansas City Royals Charitable Foundation, gave us a grant for $10,000 to offset the costs of our ball fields at Bernard Park. So we were really, really pleased with that, really thankful to the Royals for that. We spoke a little bit about health insurance at the previous meeting. So it was confirmed that with United Healthcare, our rates actually, on the most preferred plan, went down like 1% or half of a percent or something like that. So our health insurance would switch to United, and our dental would go to Sun Life Dental. So.
That's the most unheard of.
Yeah, we were pretty pleased, and I, I hope they're not just lowballing it and raising it next year to get our business. I, I hope that's not the case, but, but yeah, we'll, we'll see what happens. But we were pretty pleased that the rates are basically flat or even like, like half a percent less than what we were at before. But we, we had to switch carriers. But so, so that's a bit of news. So a reminder, we have our joint work session with Leavenworth County next week. That's at 6:00 p.m., similar to our meeting with the school district. I'll bring some pizza, so we'll have supper provided for our joint work session with Leavenworth County next week. That's separate from their, the county's having a property tax forum on Monday, June 27th, downstairs in our community center. So if that's something you guys are interested in, let me know. I know a couple of you guys have already reached out to me about that. But I think, I think the county wanted a, a rough estimate of how many people from each governing body would be there for their property tax.
I watched their meeting on tape yesterday, and they're not getting very good response.
That is true. That is true.
Although I did point out that we've come.
It's in our, it's in our basement, yeah.
Well, they're just, I mean, they hadn't heard, I mean, they want school districts, local governments. And they hadn't heard as of Wednesday, they hadn't heard from any school district. And they heard worse from us, and I think they heard tangy, and that was about it.
Yep.
So.
Could be the topic.
Yeah. Well, again, if, if you guys are able to confirm, I know that's a month out. And then if we can pull up the, so that's the proposed one. And then I figured if, if there's any changes you guys would like to make, we can kind of talk about that publicly and pros and cons. But again, and maybe I didn't explain it super well at the last meeting, but again, these, these are the big blocks that we're not able to split up. So that's why blocks like that, blocks like that, those are the ones we're not really able to split up.
What's the white thing there?
Little landfill. Yo landfill.
Or, yeah, this is property of City of Leavenworth. Yeah, that's technically Leavenworth City. That's.
That's why I thought.
So the problem was Ward three and Ward one?
Two.
The, the split, right? Because of Wyndham Hill and Rock Creek. So you're not going to be able to do anything with that?
No, because you can see part of Wyndham is technically part of the Rock Creek census tract. So we weren't able to do that. And again, there's that little tail on the far south part of Ward three where it would be south of Gilman and that's only a handful of homes. Yeah.
Yeah, it's that one.
Rock Creek, it's, it's.
Yeah. It's like, I think that's eight or ten houses or something.
Right. It comes in and goes up.
Yeah. But, but we felt like, we felt like the populations were pretty close. We were pretty pleased with that. But I mean, beyond that, I think this map, the, the county clerk has already told us it would be compliant with everything she would need. So if you guys have any feedback or anything, we can talk about it and bring it back for approval at the next council meeting.
I'm good.
I'm okay with it.
If the county's located.
Yeah. Tried to do it our way and it didn't work for them, so let's do it their way.
Yeah. Again, and I, it was disappointing because at one point we were led to believe that you could split them as long as it was on arterial roads and.
As long as what?
Initially, when we were speaking about this back in February, we were led to believe you could split a census tract as long as it was on like a major road, an arterial road. So that's why originally we had Gilman as the boundary between Ward two and Ward three.
Well, it is what it is.
Yeah, it is what it is.
If you locate it, then there ain't no sense in going back and saying, what about this? Let's just go. They're, they are very close.
Yeah, they're all within a hundred and twenty.
Yeah. We felt good about that.
Ward two would be the biggest ward.
Well, have you, have you heard anything more? See where you've got the number five-five-three in there, that big farm that was for sale on the corner of?
Sisters Farm.
Yeah.
Any, any word at all on that? I mean, because that was, that was one of the things that Jesse and I were looking at is if we split that out, you know, that would.
I don't have any type of timeline. It's a property owner from Texas. I think they'd spoken to a local engineering firm about brainstorming ideas and things like that. But beyond that, we don't have any type of timeline. I know we even reached out to the proper, I think the engineers for the property owner because we have all that ARP money. So if someone wants to build houses there, we can, we can help them out with their sewer. Yeah. So we reached out to them about that, nothing. So again, that's one of the challenges about having non-local people own property like that. But that's, so we haven't heard anything.
But the purchase is complete.
The purchase is complete.
There's no more signs, there's no more anything anymore.
Correct. It's, it's an outfit out of Texas.
Okay. Do we have any time limit on that ARP money for the sewer to be spent?
I think the end of two thousand twenty-four, I think. So we've still got a couple of years left. And again, anyone who's even dropped any hints about building in Lansing or anything, Matt's reaching out to people, I'm reaching out to people. Or, you know, for you guys too, if you guys ever talk to anyone who's looking at building, whether it's a business, homes, whatever, we can help them out with, with water and sewer costs, with ARP money. So feel free to spread the word on that. That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, we'll go around the horn to the council.
He had his hand up.
Well, Dan's first, so he can go.
I had a question for Tim. When are we going to get one of those mobile signs telling drivers that, you know, get ready, two weeks is going to be crazy?
So we, we don't have one of those right now. I think we are going to reach out to Leavenworth and Leavenworth County to see if they can put one up. I have been pretty pleased. Our PIO has done a pretty good job getting the word out on the internet. There, so there's, there's a lot of things on Facebook about it. We had it in the connection. So I think word is slowly starting to get out there that, yeah, that intersection.
I was gonna say, people are complaining already, so word's out there.
Yeah.
I was just more concerned with people that pass through Lansing and being a big bottleneck because they didn't know. Take alternate route. I'll make sure it's squared away tomorrow with Garrison.
Well, and I know we.
Garrison will put it out because that traffic flow from. That's going to slow people coming up through the front gate. Going to post, coming back from post and.
The, the one thing though, I think with all construction projects like that, no matter what, I think that first day is going to be, the first day or two. And then after, after people sit in traffic for.
Then everybody's going to go down to.
Ten minutes.
Put your guys on DeSoto, chief, so we can, you know, make some of this budget back.
I can tell you right now, I go out to DeSoto a lot of, since we raised that speed limit from thirty-five to forty.
Yeah.
Traffic has doubled on DeSoto.
Yeah.
Since we raised that speed limit.
And I know that's one of the things that I think.
All right. That was your time, Dan.
What, one other thing? I, I've had a couple of homeowners say thank you for putting in the money for the bud, I mean, the, the article in the connections on the budget. They said that was very informative and I wanted to give you the feedback. And that's all.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Beth, thank you. It's almost congratulations, so.
Yeah.
And Mike, thank you also. Tony, thanks for not asking for an inordinate amount of money tonight. Appreciate that.
That's all.
Thanks, Gary. Don.
Just a shout out to Beth and her staff for the audit. As always, over the years, it's, it's been either something very minor or something like we were briefed on tonight, that is nothing, nothing drastic, so good job, great, keep it up. And do have a question on, if we were to find out who really owns that church on East Eisenhower. I would think that would be pretty simple to go to register our deeds, Leavenworth County and find that out. But we seem to be running into a wall, so where do we go with this? How do we find out?
Just the one that's down in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wonder. It's, it's not so much the matter of finding out the name. I know Matt probably called help out as well, but I think that we had no O and E on this, but it's not so much a matter of just who names on it. It's locating the entity, whether it's Mount Defunct, whether or not there's the successor, owner, or whoever.
Because it's a nonprofit. Like if it was, if it was Joe Schmo, in a way it would almost be easier. But it's a nonprofit and it's finding the people in charge of the nonprofit. Right. It, it would actually be easier if it was a private property owner who owned it because they'd already be starting to collect back taxes and at some point it would come up for sale. But because it's a church, there's no tax collection on it, so it's just kind of sitting there.
But it's not an active church.
That is correct. And I've talked with the county about that and they've started the process to start charging taxes to it because the church is no longer active. That's kind of the first step in trying to get to a point where we can get the property back somehow.
Somebody better know who the entity is.
The problem is the individual who had set up the church has passed and there's no succession for that. So it's this entity that's just sitting out there that doesn't have any, anybody active in it or any succession for it. We've had the register of deeds look at it. She did a bunch of research. She emailed both of us. She ran into the same wall that I did when I had, when I looked at it myself and then I also hired a, a alliance title here in town. We hired them to do an ownership and encumbrance report on it. And pretty much they just came back and said it's the church that owns it. Well, we knew that, thanks. As frustrating as it is too, though, I mean, we do have a contact, contact information for the person who's residing in the home across the street, which is also under that same owner.
So is, is that person maintaining that property, moving into that, or do we have?
He was, he was up to date on his, yeah, he was up to date on his sewer bill and.
He came in and paid a large.
Yeah, he came in and paid a large amount on his sewer bill. So I mean, again, as silly as that sounds, just the fact that we have a contact name and phone number now, that's, that's more ahead of where we were six months ago.
It's progress. He moved, he moved into that house on who says so? Did he just say, here's a vacant house and I'm going to move in? I mean, this, you know, this.
I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah. No, I know you don't. I, I know you don't. And you and I, Tim, we've had plenty of conversations about this.
Shane, my recollection was that the person that is living there now had discussions with.
The two old ladies.
Right. And then they were in a nursing home.
And they're gone.
They have passed. So who the successor is to that person, who would then enforce any lease or take rent payments.
He referenced some attorney.
The guy's obviously living there. He made the claim that he was on, except he think when he wasn't.
Right.
Who told you you can move in there? What?
Well, that, that, that's a civil matter between him and whoever the quote owner of the property. Because.
I, yeah, I know.
I mean, well, the city, I mean, that, that's a civil matter that's outside our purview as the city.
It's, it's, it's just like, I mean, look what it took at the other house across the street on the corner and we knew who owned that. And that's still.
Well, but the thing with the churches, as long as you have the driveway, the access from the road, city staff can always take a look at the place, see if there's anything that's in violation of code. You don't have to just end at the street because it does have a drive that goes.
Yeah, and, and, and every time I drive by there, and Don's right, somebody's cutting the grass, in one of these days, I'm going to see the guy cutting the grass. And I'm going to say, you're cutting this for who? Just out of the goodness of your heart? Because there's a lot of grass to cut there.
You happen to run into him, give me a call. I'd love to come talk to him also.
I, I, I don't know. This is, this has just been a frustrating deal that's went on for years and, you know, who told you you could live there? Very simple question.
I, I will add that when I visited with the tenant of that property, when we were trying to set up the sewer service and we di tested this property, I, I pressed him for information of who the owner was, how do we get ahold of them? He claimed that it was an attorney representing the church out of Kansas City, would, would not give a name or a phone number or even the name of the firm. So I.
That doesn't sound suspicious, does it?
There's all kinds of.
I took it as far as I could.
There's all kinds of.
But again, I, what I'm hearing you guys say is that the city really can't do anything.
And Don runs into the property on the north side of the road because obviously he's in some kind of lease arrangement, rental, month to month, year to year, whatever that thing is, but that's a civil matter.
Right.
If we don't regulate contracts and all that kind of stuff.
Right. We can do something because the process has started by charging them taxes that eventually we'll end up with a court out steps.
Correct, yes. For the, for the piece on the south side, that's correct.
Right.
That process has been initiated, yeah.
Andy, have you ever ran into anything like this before?
Waters? Yeah.
That's all I got, mayor.
Thanks, Don. Uh, Gene.
Well, oh, thank you, Don. Clearly. Well, yeah, I know it and, and it's a battle we've had for years. I don't know. And I know that everybody's done what they can do, but, and that's the part I don't get. So, but anyhow. Beth, I know audits are always stressful. It's a lot of things to take care of and keep track of, so good news, so. Good job to you and Georgia and whoever else. I understand department heads were involved, so a lot of people were involved in this and I, I know it's a stressful time for you. And Tony, thanks. Mike, thanks for bringing up the word radar in an open meeting. Somebody will go, no, I heard him say you're putting in radar.
He's not writing it in the paper, Gene. You're okay. He'll only write it about me.
Thanks to everybody, yeah. Everybody works together good and that, and that's a good thing. That's all I have.
Thanks, Marcus.
Thank you, Beth and all your team. Great job. Congratulations. That's, that's a lot of work. And, and Tim and all the staff, Tony, Mike, Matt, all of you, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Hey, we've talked about a lot of things and I appreciate you bringing up Saturday night. If you guys can, I mean, Saturday morning, if you guys can, come out there. It's all the hard work that they put into doing the new bricks at the monument, so it's pretty cool, pretty cool event. It'll last less than thirty minutes.
Isn't the speaker kind of long-winded? Yeah.
Uh, you know, I told him I'd speak less than twenty-five minutes and they all started laughing.
If you can think of something.